Councilman Robinson said that he may not make the work session at all today, so we were waiting on one other. So, we're going to start off with discussions on the upcoming fiscal year budget. Kim, are you going to kick that off? And I also, I want to apologize to the mayor and the clerk. I, for some reason, was unaware of the meeting started at four. I just happened to be about a half an hour early today, which is rare, so.
Yeah, it was, I remembered after the text.
I'm going to blame it on Kevin since he's not here.
Yeah, it's Boonie's fault. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. How we're going to start this format is we're going to be discussing utilities, gas, electric, water, and sewer. In your packet, you'll have a complete packet here, and if we want to start off with gas, on page, inside the, inside is page one. And what I came up with here is just a, really a summary page, looking over the next three years, what we currently have got in the budget, and just trying to look at some projections for the next two years. And then I give opportunity for each superintendent to be able to go through high level of some of the capital infrastructure that's being proposed. So, if you'll, you'll look in the gas department, I did a summary to be able to go down and let you see total revenues, my, total operations expense, giving us a, what I call net operations of a profit of $1,027,519. And then you'll see below there where we can look at what we're reserving for, capital equipment and improvements, $561,100. Reserve for system upgrade, $2,004,12,213.
Kim, I'm sorry, I got to stop you. Where are you?
On page one. I've got them labeled.
Which packet?
In your packet.
This one? Yeah, that one. This one? No, no.
I'm there. I'm not seeing that.
Right here, page one, left column.
I'm looking at that. I was on the right page.
I'm sorry.
I didn't see those numbers.
Page one. Right here? This is page one? Alright, that's where we are. Alright, sorry, guys.
We'll try that again. I had a little slant, just still didn't see it.
No, that's okay. So, we started out as a high-level summary, giving you your total revenue, your total operating expenses, and then coming down to your total, your revenues of operations minus, total revenues minus your operating expenses, giving a total of $1,027,519. Then I broke down for you to be able to see the reserve for capital, reserve for system upgrades, your warrant payment, and then your general fund transfer. And then coming down to what we have as our total deficit for the year is going to be And then we add back for cash, we add back our depreciation, given a total deficit for gas is going to be $1,0299,043. And then I'm giving you what your cash, your total cash in the bank as of last month. And this is kind of, just gives you really a summary of where the gas will stand at the end of this year. And we have representatives from the gas department that can go over for the public to know what your system upgrades are for this coming year. And I believe in the last budget meeting, we did go over gas, but this is if y'all have any more questions.
So, are you saying the bottom line at the end of this fiscal year is the $10,089,000?
That's your, that's your cash today. What we're going to have at the end of this, this coming fiscal year, you're going to be in the hole, $1,000, almost $1,003,000. That's after you pay, you know, for your infrastructure for this coming year.
That's not using the cash.
You're spending...
That's not using the cash, correct? Right.
Right. I thought you said that, you said that what we would be left with at the bottom.
Basically, we're going to have 8.7 left over, roughly, 8.8.
I'm looking for that end-of-year number. I don't see you...
It's not there. You would have to do it.
You have to do the math.
Do the math. Yeah, it's not there.
I'm sorry, I didn't put that on there. I was just trying to show you where your deficit's going to be, and you have the cash to cover that deficit for this coming year. And, and you'll have, and then the next year, y'all still be, I'm understanding there's a study that'd be done on the gas department showing that we'll spend in '23 additional $3 million in capital, and '24, $3 million in capital. We don't have, currently, I do not have the five-year projections to do a good estimate. But at the end of these next three years, you have enough cash in your reserves to cover the cost of being in a deficit for the next three years.
Yeah. I think it would, yeah, I think it would have been helpful if you'd have showed what those balances are every year, running out, you know, three to five years. So, if I see that, if I look at 2023, you are showing a $1.7 million deficit total. And then one point, roughly, similar number for 2024.
So, we ought to have like $5 million by the end of 2024 still left over in cash?
Yes.
3.4. I'm getting, yeah, 5.4 million at the end of 2024.
And part, and part of that's going to depend on the engineering, you know, we're budgeting the engineering this year for the cast iron replacement or for the system upgrades. And so, some of that's going to depend on what comes in from the engineering report. The $3 million, that's not a firm figure, but it's what we feel is a good estimate at this point.
What $3 million are you referring to?
In system upgrades.
Each year up here at the top, the...
So, it's 2.4 this year, and then $3 million, and $3 million.
Now, when it says reserve, what I thought that that was a, that's your budget number, then?
That's a budget number right now. And that's going to depend on the engineering.
Okay. When I see a reserve for system upgrades, I look at that number as that's what was in reserve for system upgrades?
No, it's a budget number.
Budgeted expense for system upgrades.
We list it as a, as reserved for because on these utilities, it's treated as an enterprise fund, all the assets are sitting on the balance sheet. So, for y'all to see what we have to reserve cash-wise for this capital.
So, are all of those four lines there, are those all expenses, then?
Yes.
Okay. So, the total other uses was the sum of those three lines, ah, four lines?
Yes.
I mean, it looks good. Gas is looking good, at least for a few years, until the engineer sees the number, decides they'll find a way to spend it all. I will tell y'all, counsel, that when we, you know, when we talk to these engineering companies about doing these, you know, I mean, I'm going to read them the riot act, none of this, you know, fluff. I'm just telling you right now, I'm going to, I want to interview them, I want to talk to them, and, and ask them how they're going to, how they're going to do this the most efficient way they possibly can. So, if you're an engineer and you're sitting out in the audience, get ready. He's coming.
Bless you.
Engineer, not if you're an engineer for the city. I'm talking about if you are an engineering company. Questions, Kevin?
Nope.
Good evening, sir.
My apologies.
Boone.
Good evening.
Alright.
Alright, are we good on that page?
We are.
Mr. Boone, we were on page one of the packet, that's in your chair.
Alright, you want to move to electric? Okay.
Yes, so, electric is on page, let's look to that. Electric is on page five of your packet, and I have page numbers that are down on the bottom.
Talk to me like a third writer.
So, it's the same for, same format for electric, to be able to give what your, your total revenue, total operating expenses, giving you a net between revenue and operating expenses for the electric is $6,720,690. And then again, same format, we reserve for capital improvements, reserve for system upgrades, their lease, or their warrant payment. They have something a little bit different. We have amounts such reserve for the, per the ordinance, and as a fuel adjustment goes into a, a reserve, and then transfer for, to general fund, and then giving you that you have a total of those uses, and then given a deficit for the year. And then we add back, well, it's given a positive for the year, we add back our depreciation, given them having a net excess of $1,017,878. And so, that, and their cash can cut, you know, they're going to be building, adding to their cash. And so, I did the same thing going over for the next, the next two years from there. So, electric, you know, looking at their budget, everything looks good on their side.
The projected revenue for the electric department, why, why does it go down so much in '23 and '24? Is that because we don't have that money provided by AMEA that's been in a network fund?
So, that's the grant from the AMA, that's the grant for those meters.
That's not a grant. That's money we collected through, money that collected by AMEA that's given to all the member cities.
Yes, but it, we have it come all in one year. So, so normally, we get a check every year, and you could recognize that check every year, but I did, we have it recognized as one, one loan.
I just don't want people to think it's a grant. It's not money that, you know, we applied for. This was, this was every member city. We have certain monies that we have them hold back, and they recommended we use it for the AMI expense, but we could have used it for other expenses as well, any expenses with, pretty much with the electric department that we wanted to use.
So, it's kind of a loose...
Yeah, so, the reason, that's, no, we've accumulated a couple of million dollars in that account.
So, is it not in here, is why the, why it goes, why it creates?
Well, once we get it, the first year, it'll be gone.
No, I'm still asking the question on your projections, what do we, why are they going down?
We're throwing that extra revenue, we're throwing that money in as revenue.
So, about, there's about...
$2 million.
Correct me, there's about $500,000 a year that goes into an account.
So, that's thrown in '22?
And we have, we've just been banking it with them.
Looks like it's all thrown in.
We've been banking it, and now we're asking for it so that we can use it. That's why I say it's, they may call it a grant, but it's really not. It's, it's money that we could have received every year.
It's, it's rate stabilization fund, and actually, I did list it as a grant, but I need to change that to the rate stabilization line, but it is the $2 million we've got sitting here for that project.
Well, now, is that going away after 2022? I mean...
And I need to add that back in this, in these projections.
Yeah, I think it needs to be added. I think there's about another $500,000 that maybe should go back into those projections in 2023.
Yeah, for '23 and '24. That's correct.
But either way, the electric department is...
It looks good.
Cash flow and...
Yes.
$9 million worth of upgrades projected.
Yeah, $9 million in addition to the, what, three or four that we've already put in there recently. So, we've, the point of this is that we've, we've undertaken over $12 million in improvements to the electrical system, and we have not borrowed any money to do it, and they will all be paid for without borrowing any money.
And after this, you'll pay $14 million.
Yeah. That's right. It'll be 14, that's right. Maybe a little more, right? That's right, thank you. That's exactly right.
Yes. So, you have any questions on that? And I have also in this, in this packet, is there a five-year plan? So, if you wanted Jeremy to discuss any of that or move on. So, on page seven is the five-year projections, that's telling what projects they're going to be working on.
Some that's in the, on the agenda today.
So, did you just put that, and not really, I'm not trying to debate this, but the underground main lines, was that just something we put in because that's something that we want to do? Jeremy?
Are you talking about right there, the five-year plan?
Correct, yeah.
We're actually coming out underground from the new substations this part.
You're also, what now?
My bad. We're coming out underground to the overhead on our new substations, that's what that is.
Oh, okay.
It's actually feed from the new substations. No, underground stuff that you see added later.
No, I'm looking at the '24, '25, and '26, the '22 and 2.25.
No, those are what we anticipate going underground in the future to start aesthetically pleasing looks in main areas and whatnot.
Right, okay.
Where we really need to go.
That's not part of the substation upgrade?
No, that's not. That is actual underground stuff, yes.
Okay.
And again, a lot of that will be in some of the older areas of town, just for resiliency, like after hurricanes, you know, hoping to not have as many power outages, and also in the downtown area.
Right. And the reason I, I look at that is, you know, is it a, is it a necessity, or is it a want? I know it's always been a want, it's a, you know...
Yeah, it's a little mixed, you say.
It's a little mixed. In other words, if we needed to divert some of these funds to some other capital improvement, it, it'll be there. It's not set in stone.
The other thing is FEMA, FEMA has had a hazard mitigation grant that you can apply for, but now it's called building resiliency in communities, and it's for projects like this that cost multi-million dollars, but allow you to, again, build resilience in your community. So, we've also talked about the possibility, you know, a year or two down the line, once we get some of these projects cleared off our plate, is to be able to apply for some of those grants to help us offset some of that cost.
A year, two, or three?
No, I was looking at it, being a little greedy too, Jeremy, and looking at that general fund transfer line, and if we have some things that need to be done there.
You're probably being greedy, baby.
I'm hoping there's more money out there with the infrastructure bill that's still on the table that we can kind of pull from that.
Yeah, leverage it, yeah, that'd be great.
We're going to need it.
We're going to need it, yeah.
I mean, the way I, what I'm, what I'm really, and also, counsel, to expand on that a little bit, is, you know, we've been promising the citizens some, some other capital improvements for years now, and, and we're going to be in a position to do some of that in, in a couple of years, water and sewer projects notwithstanding, Jason. Maybe we can transfer it over to water and sewer and get those paid for, but there's a lot going on. Electrical and gas are looking good, though.
Yes, and it sampled it on the general fund transfer, when I went back and looked, the amount that's being transferred, if you compare that to your revenue, it's 2% of their revenue, and in most cities that do not own their electric, they have transfers that's 4%, 5% of gross sales. So, just, just to give y'all an idea, that number is nowhere near as if it was a separate company, so you're not, you're not taken away from these utilities like you would be in a normal calculation. That helps y'all there. A 2%, so that number is 2% of your total revenue versus a 4% or 5% is what would be paid to other cities.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not going to vilify the utilities anyway, because I think they're fantastic.
But just to be able to justify what that is, that's the point I was trying to make to you, is you're, you're getting, you're doing, paying, the, the electric department is paying 2% of their revenue over to the city of Fairhope, general, compared to, it could be 4% or 5%.
So, let me just ask you this, down at the bottom, when you say that targeted reserve fund, that's what you're saying, that's, that's what we would like for that fund to be? Or is that what you predict it will be?
No, that is, that is what, more or less, I've been putting on there as a recommendation. You know, it's up to, I mean, it's up to y'all what y'all want, but that's what I'm putting down there as a recommendation that you would want to put, and it's just 20% of your annual revenues.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Yeah, and that's something for y'all, you know, to work, you know, for the city to work on, as we see, you know, I know we've been doing a lot of improvements, a lot, spending a lot of money for infrastructure, and that's what you want to use that money for, but going forward, you know, that's what you want to use as a target. As a council, you may want that number to be something else. You may want it to be 15%, but just to be able to have that in your reserves.
That's a big number, 20% is a big number.
I mean, yeah.
Well, you might get somebody yelling, "Rates are too high," if you can save 20% of your revenue.
Moves the city.
Alright. Everything will be underground. You won't have to worry about it.
Looks like we need the reserves, but we don't like borrowing money, so. How about that? Just saying.
On page 10 is the summary for water and sewer combined. So, are y'all ready for this one?
Ready?
Not really.
Yeah, just a layout, gas looks good, electric looks good, and we're, we're going to start some infrastructure here. Starting out with revenues, and then the operating expense, giving a net of $6,889,878. Then let's look at the reserve for capital equipment, reserve for system upgrades. That shocking number of system upgrades that we're budgeting for this year is $15 million. They're looking at their warrant pay, payment that they have to make is $1,018,740. Reserve required for your ordinance, those are tap fees, half of the tap fees are, goes into a separate fund, and then the transfer to general fund is $500,000. So, given a deficit of $12,136,032. Let's absorb this in.
Jason, I think I ask you this, can we really have that many projects going that we could actually spend $15 million in one fiscal year? Be tough, wouldn't it? Okay. So, realistically, this will, these numbers will just, it's just almost impossible to do that much. Some of these numbers will shift to the right, but they may get larger a year or two down the road, right? Instead of it being $6 million and then $5 million, they may go to, I'll make up a number, eight and nine, right?
So, it could be like eight across the board, nine across the board.
Right.
But it's still money gone.
No, it's going to be money gone, and what, what, Kim and I are going to set it, set the table for is that there may be, and there's probably going to be a need in the next, and it may not be this year, it may be the next, or the next, of some short-term borrowing, and I say short-term, very short-term borrowing, because if you look at the revenue minus operating expenses, we, we do have a pretty decent excess, but we don't have enough. If we were to be able to spend that much over, say, three years, we don't have that much excess to keep up.
Right.
The spending, if not this year, will outpace the reserves and the income in the next, right here, Kim?
That's correct.
And right, two, in year two or three, or maybe four.
That's exactly right.
And we'll, we'll cross that bridge, but, but we want to let the public know that that's not a surprise. We are planning for that, and there will be a time at which we go get a five-year or seven-year note.
This is the time to do it, to get it done, if we're going to do it.
And we can look at that on page 18, if you wanted to go there. So, page 18, this is, this is where your debt is currently, and the dark blue is your water and sewer, so you can see where our, our payments are running currently. And you can see on 2031, the city, the utilities will have no debt. That's where you currently already have this warrant already out there, this is the payment structure is out there. And if you'll look on page, page 19, I put a proposed water and sewer to, to borrow a $10 million, 2% interest, structuring it so that when the payment reduces down in '27, 2027, that we pick up the payments for, if you go for a proposed $10 million borrow. If you'll look on page 20, that's what it's going to, cash flow would look like. And, and what it does is, it would, it would just keep your payments, and as revenues go up, it's going to, cash flow-wise, you'll be able to, you know, be able to pay for it and not have these big old dips. And then still, in 2031, you would have, be still debt-free, but this will give us $10 million of cash for those infrastructures. And, and I'm doing an assumption of 2%. I know that we borrow, we refinanced the utility, which is a 2020 issue, at 95 basis points, what is it? So, it's just trying to throw assumptions out there to give y'all some options, so that when we're spending 15, if we spend $15 million this year, this is what it would look, this is what it would look like if y'all chose to do something like this.
You know, that, that page 19, that's an excellent page, by the way, Kim. I think that it also shows that if we wanted to, but, but our, our rates are so low, I don't know that it would be wise. I mean, we truly could pay off the electric fund debt like just now, if we wanted to, and a penalty notwithstanding, gas fund debt is not very much at all, you know, either. The only significant debt that we have, and our, and our general fund debt is, is extremely, extremely low now. So, in 2012, our city's debt was right at about $40 million. We had an additional $8 to $9 million that we were on the hook for because we backed the airport debt, which was incurred back in like 2006 or '07. So, I really said we had about $48 million in obligations. We still have some of that, that airport debt, you know, that we've backed, and we're kind of splitting that note with them, not equally, we're paying the lion's share of that, but if you look at that, you know, our, our debt right now is a quarter of what it was eight years ago. I don't think many governments can, can say that. And then, if you can say that we've put literally tens of millions of dollars into water and sewer, and electric and gas, and you, you can have it paid off by 2031, you know, that's really saying something. And something else will come up between now and then, but we'll still be, I think, way, way ahead of most governments.
But this, this gives y'all something to look at, some options to know, you know, this would be a, this is what I would recommend as a structure, you know, to keep your cash flow pretty level.
Yeah, and we don't look at rates too, counsel. We'll look at what the rates are at that time, you know, because we have every option, Jimmy, you know, as you know, we could borrow from ourself, for instance, if we had to, but that doesn't make any sense to do that right now, because that money's making so much money. It's making more than the borrowing rate, so we don't want to deplete our other reserves.
We wouldn't take that, right.
Yeah, and you don't necessarily want to take from government to the general fund and loan to utilities, but there's just a lot of, we have some options.
Yeah.
Depending on what rates do.
But this proposal's based on going ahead and borrowing the money now for seven years, eight years?
Yes.
Well, it would be whenever, well, I guess we do need to consider that.
No, this is based on...
Whenever the money starts to run out, but do we need to lock in a rate?
Yeah, this proposal is based on borrowing the money now, but has a, a unique repayment structure that, that matches up with your cash flow when the other debt's being retired.
Yeah, I just put in amortization schedule, January 1 of '22, borrow $10 million, and then annual payments. Yeah, I just put in amortization schedule, January one of twenty-two, borrow ten million dollars and then annual payments, two percent. You know, depends on when you, when you decide to pull the trigger.
How soon do we need to try to lock that in? Because we can, we should be able to beat that two percent if we do it soon.
Aaron says he'd do it under one percent.
Is he out there?
I think so.
Is Aaron out there?
Never mind, I thought I.
But, but I mean, just like, we put this out for bid. That seven and eight-year window, you seen how Trustmark did with the airport. I mean, you're, you've got that bank's good niche of a market, that there's a lot of competitive. And we've seen that in the airports, it's really competitive.
Do we need to, Jimmy, what do you think? I mean, it's, October's here.
I mean, I, I would.
Do we need to get that bid out on the street?
Yeah, I would lock it down now.
Treasury, when did treasury went up today? The ten-year treasury note went up today, didn't it?
I would want to, but I would say.
Are you a banker?
No. I would say things are definitely going to move up at some point, so you might as well lock it in now.
I think we should probably get that bid package together.
I can, I can work on that, have that bid package, and that could be part of the passing of the budget on the next meeting, is to have that in there as a recommendation.
Yeah, as a recommendation to put that out on the street. I mean, because it'll take a little while to get bids and it'll take a little while to award it, and then we'll have, hopefully they give us some small window, it probably won't be much, but it might be, might be thirty days. Any specific questions about that?
No, I like where you proposed it here.
The only thing, and I'll put a wrinkle in it, and I'll say this to the water, so the sewer department, is that anytime we propose a ten, fifteen, twenty million dollar capital upgrades project, I wonder, and after I beat up on our local engineers and said we're going to hold their feet to the fire, do we, would it be wise to get a second opinion as to what's the best method to, to increase our water supply?
When you say second opinion?
Well, I've heard from our water and sewer department about, you know, the new well, which makes sense to me, the new transmission line, you know, twenty-four-inch line, and, and other lines that, you know, go mostly south and east of here. But does it make sense to get a second? If you, if you were going to spend that much money.
You want to be one hundred percent.
I was going to say, I believe that engineering has already been approved.
Am I correct?
Yes. So y'all have already approved that several meetings ago, so that's already in the.
So everything that we've been talking about then hasn't necessarily been vetted, they're going to do that?
But, right, you have, it hasn't, but the engineering has already been approved, so that works already.
The engineering contract.
The engineering contract, correct.
Which one was that, Krebs?
Krebs and Kimley Horn.
All right, good deal.
Having a hard time keeping all the projects straight.
There's a lot going on.
Yeah, that's what I was, yeah, I was wondering where, yeah.
You know, Kevin, that reminds me, you know, several years ago, we had that big sewer study done and all the upgrades. There, there was a difference of opinion about what's the best method to do that.
Well, there is, that was a technique though, as far as the difference of opinion, where this is, basically we're looking at the size of the lines, and I can assure you, for the next fifteen or twenty years, this is the size of the lines. You get all the second, third opinion, I guarantee you, they'll tell you the same thing.
Well, I'm thinking rounds and, you know.
Well, that's true enough, except for, again, you've got the issue that you have one site that is prime for everything Farrel's going to need, and that's, and you're gearing up for that site. And you're thinking, well, maybe, we may change sites, but it'd be foolish to do that in the fact that that's what this site is geared to do.
Well, I'm just suggesting it might be foolish just to state that until we know that, that that's what they recommend. And maybe that's exactly what they'll come back and recommend.
Well, as far as the engineer's done the testing, ground testing at that site, that is what they are recommending.
What is this, we might as well get into it, what does this well five news mean to this budget?
It means in the future, you're going to lose the well. We've got permission from ADM to run that well in case of emergency, we have to test it daily for manganese.
That's how many gallons a day?
It's a million gallons a day.
Jason, excuse me, let me catch up so I can understand the conversation. Where's well five again? I can't remember all the wells.
County Route thirty-two, just nearly to the airport from Reno, it's on the right side when you go down.
About thirty-two, by the airport. Yeah, so what's going on with well five now?
Manganese is over the limit.
Oh, from the DZT, is that from the study?
Manganese, no, it's inorganic, just like iron.
Yes.
So it's naturally occurring, it's just at a higher level than what's permissible in your drinking water.
Okay, but that's not from the study that we, you, you found that out previous to the DZT study, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
That's what I'm asking you. Okay.
But it's been an issue for quite a while, and Curtis can talk more on that and Tim, but well four is not far behind it. Same issue as well four. So there's two wells that are borderline, one of them is already crossed, the other one's borderline. So, you know, again, you've got a geologist, I'll go back to what Mr. Burrell said, you've got a geologist that's worked for Fairhope for many years, that has made the recommendation of where to go. We didn't pull it out of our hat, that's where they said to go. And the water quality there from our testing from several years, and like I said, again, the professionals are sitting there, and they can go into history, that you don't have those issues there. There's the manganese is trace, if that, iron is trace, if that. So it's the best quality water.
That's well three, correct?
You're talking about well three.
Right.
And then.
Treatment Plant Three, that well field there, that five point two acres.
So that would solve a bunch of issues, is what we're talking about, not just the quality of water, but also the water pressure on that south side, right? Because all we got right now, once it's all up to the north, we don't have anything down south, is that correct?
Currently, we can't deliver the water from Treatment Plant Three to town because of the line size, eight inches.
So if you put all your eggs in one basket, you go down into well three, and you, you put tons of money into it, you get a study that your manganese or your iron's higher than the threshold in five years, what do you do then? I guess that's why I always want that second opinion. What, what's, do we have some data that tells us that we're so far below those thresholds and they're not trending that way, that it makes sense to put all the money into that site?
It does, because it's the largest site, five point two acres, and the water's treatable. So if, which it hasn't proved out, and how old is Treatment Plant Three? Nineteen eighty, so from nineteen eighty to today, there's been no manganese or iron issue, so that's a pretty good track record.
How often are we testing for all this?
Today, we're testing weekly, but prior to the issue, it was with over two years.
Okay, so we're testing weekly, and it's not really a water quality issue?
That's correct.
Okay.
So if it becomes a water quality issue in the future, there is a removing technique, just like with surface water, which would be filters, you would filter the water.
But just in case anybody's watching and they're getting concerned, it's not a water quality issue.
So, question, the DZT, they will also test for this as well, correct?
Yes.
So that's a second opinion, because when we run this federal test that we have to do to get certified, they will let us know where our water quality and what's in our water on that test that we're paying that forty-three thousand dollars for.
I just wasn't aware of any DDT issue.
It's DZT.
Yeah, I don't understand what you're, no.
No?
I don't know of any testing that we're doing with DZT. You're confusing maybe with the wastewater.
D I Z.
Yeah, discharge information zone.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with, none of that connected?
Okay, all right, just wanted to clarify, all right.
The other thing, I think you may want to look at is, you know, nobody's got a crystal ball to tell you what could happen in five or eight or ten years, but you got to do something now.
I understand that, but I'm.
This is the, that's what I'm saying, this is the most viable spot that we have, because the amount of water that's below the ground, the size of the acres you have, and the proximity of how you get to town.
I just think if you don't ask the question, it'll bite you, you at least ask the question.
And I hope I'm answering the question.
Yeah, and you are. So what about, you said something about being treatable, meaning that you can take that mineral out of that water, but we can't, or it's just cost prohibitive to do it at well three? Or, I'm sorry, five, well five, I'm sorry, well five.
For a million gallons of water, the cost to do that, yes sir, because you'll be looking at, somewhere between a half a million and a million dollars to set that treatment up, which is, you also got to have a place to backwash, because it's a filter, so you'd have to backwash the filter. We'd have to look at the discharge where we could discharge it. So there's multiple things. So the answer to your question is yes, it can be done there, but you're only a million gallons. So if you're going to do that type of treatment, you would want it at a larger facility, and it's a, it's a large footprint.
Because I started thinking if we run into that in ten years at three, it's going to cost millions of dollars to treat that. But the cost goes down as the volume goes up per gallon.
And it's just a typical sand filter treatment or mechanical filter. You could use a pack, which is activated carbon, there's several removal for iron and manganese.
And the other location was which well that you're monitoring, other than five?
We're monitoring all of them, but four has, has, it's not to the limit, but it is in the water there. And manganese, I want to add since we're on TV, to say that it's not a health issue. A lot of people will go buy, you know, manganese and take it, it's a vitamin. It's an aesthetic, because it stains. And the stain is there in the water lines and people's clothes and stuff of that nature. So it is an aesthetic. It's not a primary standard, it's a secondary.
The other thing that I just want people to understand is that we test our wells, but when we get these high levels, that we actually contract with an outside testing site to also test again to make sure that we are accurate in our testing. So it's not just, we're not just relying on what we're getting. If we see anything that looks abnormal, that we do contract with an outside testing company to test, test the water to make sure that we're providing the quality of water that, you know, our citizens deserve. So I want to make sure everybody understands this does not impact water quality, that we are testing on a regular basis and using an outside testing service if necessary.
Would that filtering look anything like the sewage treatment plant filters?
Size-wise?
Or the size?
No, sir, no, sir.
They don't operate in the same way whatsoever? I think that was about a million dollar add-on, that was several years ago.
Tim can speak of that, he's more familiar with that than I am, but then, but to know is a different technique for water. But it's not, the footprint is small.
That's what I was asking, okay.
When I say small, the footprint's small compared to your treating five to six million gallons of water. You need land to do it, but, you know, you're going to take up an acre or so.
And Jason, you said you can complete fifteen million dollars worth of projects in one year, but you've got them prioritized on which ones you would start first if.
Yes, sir, it's in the five-year plan, but yes, sir. And we've already started two of them, you know, one is out for bid now, we're doing a pre-bid tomorrow. And then opening bids of.
Fifteenth, am I saying that right?
Fifteenth, on the well, and then we're going to discuss further on the treatment plant. We've got some more information back on sizing, so that will be ready to go out for bid shortly. The water line is through the primary, preliminary engineering, we should have that ready to go out on the street in about three weeks. We're just having to run some things by the county to get, just to change their mind on a couple of things. We're wanting to open cut the county road instead of board, it will save us about a half a million dollars. And we, I just don't see the need of casing the county road, putting twenty-four-inch ductile iron main in.
And that's the engineering that we were talking about, help put together those bids so we can get those out. And once the budget's passed, we'll be ready to, ready to roll with these projects. So we're, we're set on go as soon as the budget's passed.
The projects that have started, what engineering was that based on?
Same thing, Kimley Horn and Krebs, the one we just mentioned.
The projects? We just turned them on to do the engineering, I thought, we just awarded.
You awarded that, it's been several months ago.
We haven't, we haven't received the bids to award a contract on the work, no, sir.
Rised the engineer and contracted with the engineer, and now they've done the bid work, and then as soon as the budget's passed, we'll be able to proceed.
Say we just started a couple of projects, and what I was asking was where, how do we start them at that?
We, we haven't started them, only the engineering, only the engineering.
Only engineering.
Yeah, I saw your, I saw your eyebrows raised, we haven't started anything, yes.
Good five-year plan.
Counsel, any questions for Jason?
Yeah, no, I, I just, I keep getting confused. I would like, if somehow I can get a, like a simple schematic of, of that well to help me remember where these things go and how. Yeah, I'd need that, yeah, so it helps me, because I can't keep up with the. I'm slow.
No, it's a lot, counsel, it is an awful lot.
Yeah.
Take like just a couple of minutes, Curtis can go over where everything is.
Yes, sir.
They're great.
You take about fifteen million dollar project, and that's about one one-thousandth of the things that hit you this week, huh?
Yeah, I, I just keep getting confused, my brain. Let me see this thing.
Okay, and that's on thirty-three?
Correct.
Got it. To Fairhope Avenue. Got it, right, got it. And then we will also repair on one eighty-one or?
So we've got, we've got repairs on one eighty-one, it's already out, what we call Band-Aid Alley. But we run into a little state, they want us to block size the road with it, so we're going to do a little surveying.
Right, and the problem is that all this work is used to, this goes into.
So basically, how you start to provide a million dollars there?
No, 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 I just want to get a visual and see what I was, yeah, that's it, thank you, yeah.
Corey, did you get your?
Yeah, I got it, I just had to see it again, and, and, yeah, to get it, yeah.
Okay. And staff, just, just to understand, you know, we're not trying to pick on you, this is, it's a lot of money, and I think that people want us to ask these difficult questions. I think it would be irresponsible if we didn't ask all these difficult questions. And sometimes we know, not always, but sometimes we do know some of the answers, but we want the public to know that we ask you those questions, because we get questions from the public. Well, you need to ask them this and that, and we want them to know that we're doing our due diligence as well. And, and it's, it's not easy to, you know, to always ask them, but we do think that it's, it's necessary. You know, we treat it like, you know, we would hopefully our own personal budget, you know, and we, we ask, you know, it's like Jimmy, you know, he'll ask his wife why she has to have that Mercedes when that Chevrolet will do, so. But I can tell you, he don't waste, he doesn't waste a penny, he doesn't waste a penny. We've got a great deal on the Ford.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
What's next, Kim?
That's what we came to talk about, the utilities, that's where we left off in our last budget meeting a couple of weeks ago. So I'm hoping that the drive will be to have it on next meeting, which is in October, to pass the complete. I think we, we went over general fund, and then here's the utilities. That's, we should have everything complete, unless y'all have any more questions, anything else you need us to go back and follow up on?
I'm good with utilities for right now, and I'm pretty comfortable with it overall. I kind of leave myself a little bit of space there for the next couple of weeks, but just to say, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty confident with it.
We want to be able to put together a nice budget packet for y'all to, you know, approve, so we can have the public, you know, have the public have their copy, you know, be able to put it out there on the website. You know, that's, that's, that's what we're.
You know, that's what we're trying to shoot for.
So do we have to make budget? Are we going to divert all of the one penny of sales tax where we divided the half a penny and then the two-quarter pennies? Are we going to have as part of the budget resolution to divert all of that penny to just to the general fund as opposed to it going to debt reduction? Or do we want to lift the cap on our emergency funding?
So in the current budget right now, we have all the sales tithes staying in the general fund. I do have some transfers, $300,000 coming from general fund to, over to capital projects fund for some projects. On tonight's meeting, we have $750,000 of excess revenue coming from general fund over to the capital projects fund. And I've got it in that resolution definition on how that money can be used only by the council's authority. So...
But the half a penny and the quarter pennies are set up by ordinance.
That's right.
So we have to make provisions to use that money. Because our debt is so small, we don't need it for debt reduction or additional. We use it for debt or accelerating the debt reduction for many years. And we just kind of coveted that portion of the sales tax revenue. But now that it's not needed for accelerating the debt reduction, we do need to also, we need to make that provision in the budget resolution to suspend with that rule, I guess, if you will. Trying to think if there's anything else like that. You always have in the budget resolution the one-time, we're going to put the one-time annual bonus in there that we get the Christmas bonus.
Right, and that is actually in the budget now as longevity pay. That's what we talked about doing for the employees from one to four years. They would receive $250. From five to 15, they would, five to 14, they would receive $500. And over 15 years, they'll receive $1,000 this year.
So does that mean that if we had some other reason to do that?
Correct.
We would still have that? Because you're not only doing it one time a year.
Correct. But that's already in the budget.
So that would make that available to us if we wanted to do that some other time of the year?
Yes, well, yes. We've got some different definitions of that recently, but yes, we can discuss that.
I'm not saying that we would.
If that's what you wish to do.
You never know in this world that we live in.
Right. That's kind of what came up when we had the COVID money.
You had some kind of incentive.
Correct.
And you have to be careful with the law that you can't give employees a second bonus. You can only do it one time during the year. So...
And calling it a longevity pay, that's been vetted from a lot of places, that you can do, set up a longevity and set the rules up. So you, once you set those rules up and approve those rules.
And with longevity pay, that's used as a retention tool. So if they receive that longevity bonus, then they would, basically if they stay through the next year, then, you know, that goes away. But it's a contract basically to keep them through the next year. If they leave in that next year, they would have to repay that money.
If you went line by line and added that to the individual employee's pay, I don't know, I don't know that that would be a bonus, would it? Wouldn't that just be part of your annual compensation?
It's longevity, it's longevity, right. And it is included in the budget right now.
I do think in the, maybe not this budget cycle, but in the following budget cycle, we need to start looking at bumping that emergency reserve fund up a little bit, starting inching that up. I know right now that would put a hole in the budget and it doesn't make sense to save while you're having known expenses that you can't cover, but...
Although in this case, it might. We'll get so much return on that money. Put it in the bank, use it to pay interest on the other, on the other short-term moment we have.
And just going back to this past storm, just having that line of credit, we were able to, you know, borrow the $5 million. And then once we got that returned back on the FEMA side, we still have money owed to us, but cash flow wise, I was able to handle it.
Have money owed to, owed to us, as you say?
Yes, yes. We still have...
But you've already paid ourselves back, right?
Back, yes, yes. And so we haven't touched our reserve, the emergency fund. So you have it there for those reasons.
And that changes annually. We had to look at the economic environment every year to determine whether or not we think it makes sense to... Let's say we had $5 million worth of damages that we had to pay for. And we were faced with spending our reserves or borrowing money and prime was 10%. We'd probably spend our money. Or, you know, but we didn't need it in general fund. We might have needed it in utilities. We'd probably roll the dice and borrow it from ourselves.
And that's the reason I put those projections for the utilities. You may say general fund sets, looks good and financially it looks good. That's where you may want to look at each utility and make sure they, their reserves are in good standing.
Right.
Yeah. And I agree with you on funding those reserves for the utilities. Makes sense in some, but you're obviously not going to fund reserves in sewer and water when you're spending money as fast as you can.
And when you, when you get those major projects done, you know, cash flow wise, then you can start putting money aside after that point.
I want to take a look at that, those capital expenditures in the general fund one more time just to see, you know, what we have, what's available to us. Because like I said, you know, for the longest time, we've been very financially responsible. And, you know, I almost feel like we need, it's time to reward the citizens with something. And I'll just be transparent is, you know, whether it's, you know, doing something with the K-1 Center that we talked about forever, or doing something with the Civic Center, you know, it's getting time to do something, you know. Or it could be recreational, I mean, other things. But something that we can show for spending the money other than reducing debt. That's why we did it.
I agree. 100%.
Other than reducing debt?
Yeah. That's why we did it so that one day...
Who was saying that?
Well, I'm saying we finally...
You got, sure you got Jack Bress sitting at that chair?
Well, what I'm saying is we did that. We're trying to get to the end of that rainbow. And we got the debt retired. Now we can actually do something.
Just make it sure.
Nobody's arguing with you.
No, he's asking, he's asking. Make sure that was me talking.
Touch him.
Make sure he's real.
No, he's no fever.
Time to do something.
Amen, brother.
All right. We have the library budget in front of us. I see Ms. Dean out there. I want to, I'll touch on this. I think that I just, I put some recommendations out there. I talked to Kim last week, and the library has been at level funding for a little while. Actually, was reduced some last year. And I thought that we could put that back in the budget. And I know that we could argue about, or not argue, but we could debate about their reserve fund. But I thought that it was time to maybe increase their budget because they haven't had an increase in quite some time. And I think about, you know, we have a hard time keeping employees. And, you know, I'm sure the library is no different. So that, the numbers that you see that were proposed are... Kim, jump in and help me out anytime you're ready.
Jack, I think what you have may be what they, the library brought to you. I think Jimmy has some numbers. That's not what the city provided. That was what they provided.
What did we speak about, though? Where are those numbers?
So their appropriation in the budget right now is 835. And that was when we met last week.
What is this? Yeah, I had made some recommendations on that.
And it was, it was 835.
It's about $20,000 more than what was, than what's in our hard copy budget, but it's less than what's being requested by the library.
So 926 is the library's recommendation?
926 is their total.
Oh, I'm sorry. 898. City of Fairhope appropriation is 898. I'm with you now, Jimmy. Thank you. Oh, there's the increase. So the 816 went to 835. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
So their total would have gone up by roughly 20, $19,000 to $20,000. Now, that's not reflected on this sheet.
I don't have a copy of what your sheet is.
This is, yeah, this is what was provided by...
That's the proposed budget by the library, not by the city. That's not what the city created.
What I had spoken to Kim about last week, this 816, City of Fairhope.
Increase in...
But I had increased that to 835. And I forgot we had taken from somewhere that we realized we could reduce. And I thought that we could put roughly $20,000 back into the library.
Well, I know the library's got some long overdue salary increases that they'd like to make in line with what the city's looking at doing as well. So it looks like we're sort of trying to split that difference a little bit between what's being requested, what was previously budgeted and kind of laying somewhere in the middle.
What was the last year's appropriation?
816.
That was, so it was level?
Mm-hmm.
No, it was a 5% decrease.
I'm sorry, Tamara.
It was a 5% decrease than what you give us from year before.
So she's comparing 20 to 21 was a 5% decrease. And then we leveled it to the 816 to go from, what, 20, 21 to 22 is what we put level. And then you increased it up just a hair.
Yeah, what you're saying is that the original 2022 proposal that's in our budget book is level funding from 21.
Yes.
But 21 was a 5% decrease from 20.
Right, 716 to 681. Round numbers.
The appropriation is like 815 and 18, 818 and 19, 859 and 20, and then it dropped to 816 in 21.
Tamara, did, were you able to recover funds through any of the COVID legislation? I mean, I know nonprofits and you, you know, you have a couple of them that's related to the library.
We received money from the state library. All libraries received $1,000 to go towards the PPE that we were invested. We've got over $12,000 invested in PPE that we did not budget for. But we got $1,000 of that back from the state. We have recently gotten some money through ARCA, which is also through the state of Alabama. But that money will not come until later this year. And it's purely for computers. So, I mean, we can't spend it on anything else but hardware for computers.
But there were, Counsel, feel free to help me out. There were some pots of money that I know that almost every business, and I know nonprofits, churches and whatnot, could go after. I didn't know if you had received any of that, other than a thousand, a thousands that not even hardly worth mentioning.
We applied for one that was available from public libraries, but we did not get. The only reason we were qualified is because we were the only library in the county that was cut 5% in the budget last year. But we did not receive that grant, but we did apply for it.
I think the library has got some employees that are long overdue for a raise. They're very conservative, trying to be very good stewards of their money. Tamara always has been. And so she doesn't want to give a raise that's not built into the budget because she would be worried it may not be sustainable in the long term. And so, you know...
Does the $20,000 help with that?
Yes. What we're looking, do you want me to come to the...
Councilman, what we are looking at is a $10 rate for beginning part-time people. And that's been the same way for 14 years. It doesn't sustain, I mean, it's way out of whack with the economy and it is not competitive with other county libraries. The Daphne Public Library, one of the positions we're looking for right now is an administrative assistant. If we hired somebody today, we would be paying them $10 an hour. The Daphne Public Library in March of this year advertised for an administrative assistant part-time, which ours would be also, for $1,850 an hour. So what we're trying to accomplish through this increase in appropriation is so that we can raise the base pay to $11 an hour. And then next year, we'd like to raise it to another dollar, to $12 an hour to even...
How many total man-hours is that? And that's what I ask you. A $20,000 addition to what was proposed would be 10,000 hours at $2 an hour.
Well, we have...
Cut it up any way you want.
Yeah, but we have 17 part-time people. And they cover, you know, our 52 hours a week. We only have seven full-time people. And four of those are department heads, and then one of those is me, the director. Then we have another assistant in circulation who's full-time. And then we have an assistant in youth services that's full-time. We actually need more full-time people. And when we go upstairs, we're going to be, I mean, we're going to have to have more full-time.
How many, how many hours a week do the part-time people work again, roughly, on average?
Well, it varies. I mean, 14 to 28. So it's a variation, and I apologize, I don't have that number.
No, that's okay. I'm just going to, I'm going to roughly say 20 hours. So 20, 17 is 340.
We've had a 33% turnover rate in 2020 and 21, which we've never, ever had before. So we are not competitive at all now, which is sad because we have a fantastic staff. And if you ask people what they like best about the Fairhope Public Library, it is the staff. So we're asking, you know, across the board, we've got people making more than $10 an hour. But I'm talking about people, right now, we've got to hire three people in circulation. I'm looking to hire a person in administrative assistant. And all we'd have to offer them is $10 an hour with no benefits whatsoever.
So just doing some rough math, Counsel, if you had, just, this is only for the part-time people, not counting the full-time people. You have 17 part-time working 20 hours a week.
340.
Times, times 52 weeks a year.
17,000.
I got 17, 680.
17, 680.
Yeah.
That's if you, that's, so, let's say you raised only $2 an hour to 12, which I think, I think I would see as very low.
Well, I mean, this is going to have to be across the board to all the part-time people.
Well, I'm just trying to get a handle on just one part of it right now. So that's 35,000. That's $35,000.
It would be a $2 raise.
If the average part-time person went from 10 to 12.
Right, so that's more than the 20.
Right, that's more than the 20,000 that I had added.
That's more than the 20, yep.
Right.
I have to interject also. I mean, that's the same issue that we face in our recreation department in Quell Creek. You know, we have several employees that make less than $10 an hour that we've barely been able to raise them. Some of them we did not raise to $10 an hour. So, and we have quite a few more part-time employees than 17, adding those two departments together. So, I mean, I feel Tamara's pain. We have a high rate of turnover with those entry-level positions as well. But we have numerous employees at the city who are barely making $10 an hour.
How about benefits?
No benefits.
Part-time doesn't get benefits.
Part-time.
Yeah, no, part-time, no benefits.
They would have to pay for it.
We have a very, just a handful of part-time people that are working more than 19 hours between 20 and 28 that do get some benefits. They don't get health benefits, but they get...
And we have that as well.
RSA.
Right, you get the RSA benefit, but not...
Holidays, I mean, vacations.
They don't get vacation or holidays, but they get the RSA benefit. They don't get vacation or holidays, but they get the RSA benefit.
Did you have to dip into your reserve funds this year?
Yeah, oh, definitely. We're doing it every day because of the five percent cut. We had to do it for our, for all our material costs. We had to do it for our maintenance.
Well, you weren't able to have fundraisers with COVID, right?
Right, but that money doesn't go toward operating expenses or toward personnel.
Is this for capital expenditures?
The money like we get from the friends goes to materials, technology. Those are the basic two things we use that money for. We don't use it for basic operating expenses. It goes programming, it'll help with that, which we have very small amount of programming worked into this budget. So what we're asking is across the board for us to be able to raise the, the rates of pay for our part-time people and our full-time people.
Give me just a moment.
They were in a hole, about thirty-some thousand, though.
So the library's got the excess funds to handle that for a period of time, but the concern is they don't want to be depleted down to zero on their excess, and they don't want to pass any kind of increases that aren't going to be supported down the road and be in a position where they've got to make tough decisions about whether or not to lay people off. So I think they want, at the very least, to know that the council is buying in and supporting whatever decision they're making.
Well, I went in and I ran a number. I was looking at your salary cost, and I'm on the next-to-last page, Council, under salaries, personnel costs. You see the five hundred and fifty. And if you, if you just put an across-the-board three percent raise on that, which we've done quite often, that's sixteen thousand, five eighteen. So what they're requesting in salaries, I could give you the number real quick.
The increase.
They're asking for a four point two percent increase in that salaries there.
But it's about forty-three thousand dollars is what we're asking in salary cost increase.
Yeah, and a lot of that's just due to the retirement plan.
The retirement plan, insurance.
And insurance.
Yeah. Workers' comp, we have to pay, we pay all that.
Two and fifteen and twenty-three, I'm gonna call it, thirty-eight. What'd you say, what'd you say, Tamara? How much was that?
Forty-three thousand, which is almost exactly how much money y'all took from the budget last year. But we're asking for more than that total cost because all of our costs have gone up. We're asking for about a seventy-five thousand dollar increase, seventy-four, you know, from the city for our appropriation, so that we can do that because it's not just the part-time people that are working subset salaries.
Tamara, do you know how often y'all were closed last year? Do you think that impacted your, I guess, revenues or traffic or anything at all? Because I know y'all closed a little bit longer than the city did.
Yeah, we did. The COVID has impacted us tremendously. And whether we're open or closed, we just, I mean, people, a lot of our population, our target population is senior citizens, and they're just not as eager to come back yet. So, yeah, we've been impacted by that.
I'm surprised that you only got a thousand dollars for that COVID, for the people not working during that time. That's, that's amazing. See, yeah.
That's what the state was given, and that's what they passed on to all libraries in the state of Alabama.
Which line item is the state's funding?
The state funding is not owned here.
Okay.
Because it is, it's outside of what the city gives us. And we have several things that we have moved from the operation, operational budget to the state budget. We're going to get about twenty-five, twenty-six thousand this year from the state.
That's what I thought.
And every dime is budgeted already. It pays for our circulation system, integrated library system, which runs about fifteen thousand a year. It pays for us to be able to circulate hotspots.
So here I see a tag on here that says state.
That means I moved it to the state funding. I budgeted that with state, or this would have been more.
Okay.
So I moved it because trying to be able to do this for our employees.
Right, robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Well, it's not exactly robbing, but.
I'm just.
Yeah.
It's the same.
Yeah.
Jimmy, what was the number in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, before that, the five percent reduction? Like eight fifty-seven, maybe?
Eight fifty-nine was the twenty twenty.
That's ironically, or coincidentally, I should say, the exact number that I came up with. If I added the forty-three thousand back just for what they had proposed for salaries. And it's not that much more than what I was asking for prior to this conversation, which was the eight thirty-five. I'm just gonna throw it out there for discussion. I'd like to see it go back at least to the eight fifty-nine.
Yeah, if we have it, yeah. I mean, we were doing it once.
Well, that's, that's a little bit of my concern. I mean, I wish we would have discussed this sooner because obviously we did the increase that we talked about last week, and now we have a, you know, a somewhat balanced budget, and we're going to have to find some money.
I didn't know we had it enough.
I mean, Mayor, I sympathize with you, but, you know, tweaking the budget by twenty-four thousand dollars out of twenty million doesn't seem like that tall of a task. I think that we actually had saved a little bit more in some of that other discussions that we had last week.
And I'm not saying it's a hard task. We can do it, but I just wish we would have prepared for this a little bit sooner.
Well, I'm not, you know, you've got several weeks to get that done. I mean, we can talk about it. That's just what I proposed.
Well, I was gonna say.
And I can, I can, I can find twenty-four thousand dollars to cut out if I need to.
I was gonna say, if you're looking for a place to spend some of that money that you're not going to be paying off debt, we've got an upstairs project. You're welcome to contribute.
Yep, I'm sure. I didn't say it'd be this year.
Yeah.
He put it out there, didn't he?
Uh-huh, he did.
We're not quite there.
We're, we're not quite there either, but we're getting there, getting ready. And that's what some of our revenue, our deferred revenue will be used for. It's already been some designated for the construction documents, which we told you about when we met with you last night. So that could be upward to seventy thousand dollars.
Council, what do y'all think?
Well, I would, you know, I'm a, these girls, and I was going to tell them, they've done a tremendous job of working to put this stuff together. So I would have to kind of, you know, if the money is there, you know, I don't mind supporting, you know. But I don't want to undo what we've already done with our treasury and our accountants.
And I absolutely think we can find the money, don't get me wrong. I'm just saying I wish we would have had these discussions earlier because we have worked really hard juggling a lot of numbers to meet a lot of deadlines that we had throughout the year to get this budget ready for y'all to pass. And just hate to start muddying the waters now, but we certainly can find it. I mean, if that's what the council wishes.
And there may be other things, Mayor. I mean, quite honestly, there may be other things in there that get tweaked between now and the next meeting. I mean, I, I don't want to, not trying to create work, but the fear of work shouldn't stop us from doing what we think's the right thing to do either.
Well, and I hope you never think that I'm fearful of work, but yes.
Take a little.
But no, I'm happy to find that money if that's what the council wishes.
The fear of asking her to do more work shouldn't stop us from asking you to do more work.
And look, I mean, the twenty-five thousand, I mean, that can be, the city can find it, the library can find it. I mean, somebody can find that money.
Go into sales tax revenue and increase the projection by twenty-five thousand dollars again. Because I bet they're that conservative.
Can you repeat that again?
I said, go in there. That's one method you could use.
Can you repeat that again?
One method, you could increase the sales tax projection by twenty-five thousand.
Okay, thank you so much.
Ninety-seven percent of projections and use that.
Well, that's what we always do. We're very conservative, and we know we're going to have surplus there. We do. But that's what we want to do is be conservative.
I know you do.
Yes, absolutely.
If I, if this was two hundred thousand, I wouldn't be saying that, but.
I'm happy you're saying it. You know that. I have no problem with it.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't say anything that would overload the city in such a way that we couldn't, couldn't handle that. But I think it's a service that we provide that's important enough to, and the fact that we did cut, and they did get hit with a pandemic, which, you know, and Tamara, I probably wouldn't say, we may not be having this discussion had, you know, you had a fair amount of reserves, and we were sensitive to fully funding that library when you had those reserves, which I know you had plans for. But I think what happened last year gives us cost and increased the budget to offset some of yours. And I will be honest and say, I am surprised that you were only able to recover a thousand. And I don't know if it's too late to go back and dig into how to recover those monies, but I would have thought you would have been able to recover several tens of thousands.
Were wide open, any grants that were available for public libraries, and our state office kept them there.
And there was just, there was general. Well, these were, there were, yeah, I think the state let people go in and try to recover any monies lost to any nonprofit due to the pandemic. They didn't say you had to be a librarian. Churches recovered millions upon millions of dollars. And just as simply by saying, people didn't come to church and didn't tie. I mean, their budgets got hurt. So I don't know if there's some opportunities for that, but I would definitely have somebody look into it. That ship may have sailed, but.
And there's been some talk at the state about trying to recover some of that CARES Act money. So I'll kind of put some feelers out and see what I can find. They did, but they're going to try to see if they can't give some of it back. So I'll see if I can find out some more information on that as well.
Y'all helpful with that?
Yeah, very surprised. One thousand dollars.
And the library does have reserves. I think we're going to have to have a pretty serious conversation about who's going to pay for what percentage of the upgrades upstairs when that time comes. We definitely know that the library needs to build that space out, but I think the library's going to be willing to and has already planned on chipping in a good chunk of that money, so I don't know off the top of my head what the reserves are.
Yeah, can I ask, I was, I was, I was, can, can you tell us what the reserves are right now?
Right now, now, we would like to hold back two hundred thousand dollars for our reserve. Like every other department has a reserve for special projects and all that. So we have right now probably about twenty thousand extra. We did use some of it for, but we're going to have to dip into that for this cost of these documents, construction documents, which we've been told to be from sixty to seventy thousand dollars.
The engineering.
Uh-huh. We've already paid the plans, and now it's in the.
That'll come out of the two hundred thousand which you're speaking of.
Yeah, that's got to come out there.
I thought we had more than that.
We did at one time, Jimmy, but we had to use a bunch of it.
You used a bunch of it paying your salary?
Paying for material, paying for materials, paying, you know, we went over all those budgets this year just with practical things like, like maintenance. The increase in cleaning the carpets and the upholstery was unbelievable. And the windows.
Yeah, I would have thought you would have gotten every nickel back for your sanitization of the library due to COVID as well.
Well, we submitted it. Well, they would only let us submit a thousand dollars. That's all we could submit. This was through the state. We had to send invoices and everything. Which we got.
Council, can I get just that? Eight fifty-nine, are we okay with having Kim plug those numbers in?
Yeah.
Recalibrate. Kim, we're trying not to come back with a bunch of stuff. Mayor, we're trying not to come back with a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Kim?
I don't have a problem with that. Yeah, I'm giving that.
Eight fifty-nine. Yes, ma'am. What now? What about eight thirty-five?
That was, that's the numbers.
That was the, yeah, interim number, yeah, that had been, yeah, we'd bumped eight sixteen to eight thirty-five, and now they ask you to bump it to eight fifty-nine. All right. Anything else on the budget, Kim, tonight, that we need to cover? There's some more paperwork here. I don't know that.
If there's any more changes, I mean, I know you want to look at a few other things, but I really hope to have a good package for y'all to approve the next meeting. And I'll just honestly, I'll tell you what, what helps us is finance is a small team, and if we get this budget passed behind us, we're in year end. So this week is crazy, just making sure of things, and in the next month, we've got to get our books closed and the auditors come in. And so trying to juggle both is very challenging. So that's the reason I'm trying to push really hard to get this budget passed, that we can get this everything in place, and then it starts purchasing, buying. That's going to start rolling in because we have vehicles that we need to order so that they'll come in in the spring. You know, we kind of missed that boat delay on the, on the budget. So anyway, we're working really hard on it.
I know you are.
Yeah.
The, Council, I would ask all of you, if you haven't had an opportunity, I know that one thing that the mayor and I tweaked last week was the community development budget. We made a few cuts to that. Nothing surprising, just kind of kept some things level. So if y'all would go in and make sure that you're, you're okay with that portion. I didn't want to belabor it, and it was.
We'll put an updated to in your box, so you have that, or email it to you, so you have that, so you can look through it. I don't think we, we didn't send that updated to the rest of the council, did we? We'll do that.
Yeah, there's one thing that I know that had changed in the last, just, you know, three, two or three working days, I'd say. That was maybe last Wednesday or Thursday. Anything else, Mayor, that I'm forgetting?
No, again, I just want to thank the council and thank treasury and all the department heads for really working hard on the budget. Again, just like Kim said, it's, you know, important to me to make sure we get this passed on time, just like Jason was saying, you know, they've already done some engineering. They have bid packets ready to go. Everybody's ready to start these projects because we know how important they are to the city. So having a timely budget has been really important to me and a timeline that we've really tried to hold to. So I appreciate everybody working together to make sure it happens. Thank you.
Let's see, we've got a couple of more items on the work session. Council members, committee updates. Do y'all have any quick updates to share?
No.
No, I'm not, I'm leaving that. No, we're good.
I'll touch on it.
Okay.
No, no.
I can read your mind.
Yeah.
Yeah. Councilman Conyers?
No updates for me.
Councilman Boone?
No. If I'm, if I'm feeling those vibes, I want to tell the council that, I think it was at the last meeting, we changed yet another iteration of the field use agreement. And we don't have all the details worked out, but we are still trying to satisfy a certain segment of our recreational community, and we will come to you. Not with a field use agreement, we feel like that will stay intact, but some type of, of agreement, and I don't know what that title of that agreement is, whether it's a field use agreement or a contract or a lease or a rent or something. Whatever Marcus tells us it has to be to be legal.
To be legal.
But we, we've got some, we've been working with the soccer community and trying to come up with something that's palatable to both the city and to the soccer community.
And I know the mayor's been fully briefed on it. Jimmy, I don't know if you and Kevin are fully briefed on that. I mean, the mayor can help us with that. And, you know, Cory and I can't come to y'all and tell you every detail of that till we get in public. But we, we are, and also we want to have on the next agenda a resolution, so don't be surprised, to keep the Halloween soccer tournament going. And it would be not in exactly keeping with that field use agreement that we passed last time. This would be, this would create much, much more revenue. And I'll just tell you, the number is four thousand dollars, which was probably five times what we got in the past for a tournament like that. But not as much as the field, the new field use agreement would have brought in, which might have been five or six or seven. And then we talked to the soccer community about some other ideas going forward, which will add a little bit more. But we are discussing with them an agreement which would allow them to continue to use the fields for a commitment from them of a certain amount, that amount being right now in the thirty-five thousand dollars a year neighborhood that they kick back into the facility and improvements into the facility. And it'd be a long-term agreement.
Well, we're still gonna need to...
And they're still gonna have some charges for those tournaments.
Yeah.
We'll still have some additional incomes from those tournaments, the way we were structuring it. But we think it avoids, they're not using it for free. They're not using a public property for free. They're actually in turn gonna be guaranteeing us a certain amount.
Right.
With the caveat that it will go into the facility, which prevents us from having to spend to budget thirty-five thousand dollars a year for improvements at the facility.
And they will also separate the entities on the books.
Yeah, and also, that was a big sticking point, was to separate the rec league from club soccer entirely, have a separate checking account and be held accountable for that. What else is it, Counsel, Martin?
That's pretty much it.
As far as creating a separate rec league, we, after much discussion, we think that it might could coexist, but I would encourage you to reach out to them. It can coexist. But we want the rec soccer to either have a separate board or to have components on the, on their board, on the soccer rights board, to make sure the needs of the recreation soccer are being met. But they believe that it is being met. They said that everything's very harmonious. I know that it doesn't sound exciting in here after we just talked about a seventy-five million dollar budget. Believe me, that soccer is as explosive as the budget. Just about as much time on that.
No doubt about it.
It's unbelievable. It's a lot of work. All right. Questions about that? Did I summarize that?
Yeah, you got it.
Just wondering about the group that had been there that got run off, I guess, or...
There, there is a group. The board has, has, has changed quite a bit. And people that were perceived as creating some issues between club and rec are no longer with the organization.
The biggest thing is we want to be legal and good legal standing. So how are we doing? We have to make sure that we're sitting on the right side of the law.
Right. And I've talked to the mayor. She's, she's being quiet because she's smart. She knows to stay out of that anyway. I think that she's, I think she's pretty much in agreement in principle with what we've discussed. Is that fair to say, Mayor? Just stick yourself out there. Feel free to step on out there. I've got my preacher sitting right behind you. He can pray for us all on this.
From the beginning that I have done a good job of sidestepping this issue, so...
Well, there's no need to continue that. You do the two-step very well.
You and Cory are, you and Cory are doing a great job. Thank y'all.
Don't want to have too many chiefs in that team.
That's exactly right. I'll be an Indian this time.
Oh, you're getting this press. You're getting this, no. Okay. All right. Any other committee reports, department heads? We've got about five minutes. Who must, who absolutely has to give a department head report? I mean, I'm thinking maybe utilities, maybe not because you covered a lot. Have you got something? You're smiling. Eric, have you got something?
Probably Richard has the most on the agenda. He's got like a couple file folders back there.
Before we get to Richard then, does anybody have anything they want to brief the council on that's just pressing that we don't want to read about in the newspaper? Come on up. All right, Richard. Jake, come on up. You're not out of the fray just yet.
No, you came right on time. Your time is impeccable.
That's twice you've done that.
To kind of go through this quickly, and I know you may have questions and we may have to pick them back up again in the, in the agenda. I know that in the budget conversation about the HVAC that serves this council chamber that, you know, we made the mistake of, I always assume that everybody knows what I know and that's a terrible assumption. And I do just want to quickly go through this, and I've got it up on your screens as well, just so you kind of understand. Upon my arrival here four years ago, that, you know, I was put on notice that this, this air conditioning on this, this portion of the building was kind of on its last legs. And we do think it's original to at least the remodel in nineteen eighty that created this space. So as far as the value, we've gotten our money out of it. And it is true, the air conditioning works with an on and off switch over in that office.
It's working tonight.
Yes, it's either on or it's off. But just a couple of key things, it is an antiquated HVAC system. The, we think the air handler, they must have installed it and then built the building around it. You'll see some video here in just a second. There are some roof issues dealing with the condensing unit on the roof. And the replacement just will have to involve a full architectural engineering, including some structural as well as the mechanical electrical plumbing. And as a cost savings, we really got to reconnect the new system to the ductwork system because we don't want to have that expensive replacing ducts. And, and so here we are is our layout of our portion of the council chambers and Steve Hall. The location, oops, let me go back. The inside unit is actually above the bathroom in an elevated mezzanine. And the outside unit is on top of the roof, and you'll see here in just a second. So this is an actual video of if you go into that storage room and you see a vertical ladder and that green thing up there with the duct coming out of it is sitting about eight and a half feet up in the air, tucked back in, in a mezzanine. The outside unit, in all of its nineteen eighties or earlier glory, is up on the roof. And you can see that there's some ponding issues that we want to take care of because we have some roof leaks that go along with it. And then right adjacent to the unit, this is a pretty typical of the roof is we have low spots that hold water and that when you step on them, they easily move up and down. And that's, that's an issue. And this is, George climbed up here and took this video. This is up with the unit in that mezzanine. You see, you've got about twelve inches of clear space between the top of the unit and the bar joist. And it's surrounded on, on three walls by, by cinder block walls. So it's encapsulated. And we've got to connect to the air return as well as the air supply line with the new unit. And then finally, just kind of give you an idea that there's looking from the justice center and there's the unit that's going to be replaced. And then the actual inside unit is behind that wall there where you see all the conduit going in. So really, the, if this was a bolt-off and bolt-on unit, you're right, it would be considerably less expensive. But the challenges here, we do require full architectural and engineering design, and that is on your agenda tonight. Our goal is for the new system to be engineered based on space, use and demand. The unit that's up there is, it's been explained to me, is a thirty-ton compressor unit that's using half of a thirty-ton evaporator core. So it's really acting like a fifteen-ton unit right now. The goal would be to replace it with a package unit, so both the condensing as well as the heat exchange is all in one box in one location on the roof, like we did with the civic center, because that makes service and, and, and maintenance much more accessible than having to go up into a crawl space. But we do have to connect it back to the existing ductwork, so that could possibly mean that part of that old interior air handling unit has to come out to tie the ducts in. And how that happens, we're not sure yet. That's the, the job of the architects and engineers. But the project may require roof penetration to either get access to that area. And then unfortunately, when we asked the engineers to give us an idea budgetary-wise, they thought that this would be a project in excess of fifty thousand dollars. Thus, it will be a public works bid project, meaning that we have to do seal bids and those, of course, come back to you for acceptance and approval. So that's just kind of my, my pistol on the HVAC unit that's here. We have managed to keep it patched together and running, but it is, you know, going on thirty-five years of service life and the days are numbered, so...
Richard, can you go back to the floor plan? That's one of the, just keep going back to where you show the council chambers and the bathrooms, right there. So when we say that that unit is cooling the council chambers, do we mean technically this room only? Or is there a much larger area that that's cooling?
Just this room, not the lobby? Okay, so no, it only cools this room. So hopefully the new unit...
And we're standing behind a, and you say it's operating as a fifteen ton, but you want to go back with thirty ton?
No, sir.
Oh, fifteen?
No.
Whatever they recommend, it won't be thirty tons.
You know, they're gonna...
But I was gonna go back and say, if y'all really think that we need thirty tons to cool this room, we have a serious issue.
Absolutely not. I mean, I think the one thing they'll do in occupancy load, based upon a, maybe a controversial council meeting, not that we ever have anything like that, maybe it's the planning commission meeting.
They may have passed that three years ago.
That, that packs the room in. You know, the biggest thing is, is that if you fill every seat in here, you've got to be able to maintain temperature. So they'll, it'll, it would be bigger than a residential occupancy for the same square foot. But no, that, it will be sized according to, for the use for this facility.
There's plenty of times that there's so much hot air in here, though, that you probably need thirty tons to cool it off.
I'm not gonna reply to that. So that was really all I wanted to share with you because I know there was, there was some conversation and we did a poor job of really explaining this is not just a run of a mill, replace an air conditioning, it's a little bit more challenging than that.
Did we not replace, have the roof repairs? We saw the ponding on the roof and things like that. Has that roof not been repaired?
No, it's not in any memorable history of, that anybody can remember. Now, it's been patched on and, you know, and I know that when we replaced the air handlers that serviced the civic center portion of the building, that they did some curb work and things like that to make sure that that was a good water type connection.
That has nothing to do with Sally, huh?
No, it's just, it's just, it's age.
All right, let's go ahead and adjourn. Let's come back here in about three minutes, make a quick break.